The meeting tonight for the Parkway Board of Education, a meeting on, board meeting on August 10th, 2011. Would you please join the board in standing and saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Calanda.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Mrs. Steal.
Here.
Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman.
Here.
Dr. Sartino.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here. Thank you. Three dot O, there are special recognitions, there are none, but I would like to take a moment and recognize that we have with us tonight officially at a board meeting for the first time, Dr. Keith Marty. We'd like to welcome him to Parkway and to this board meeting. Dr. Marty and I and Beth have been playing tag team for the last several days at the several kickoff meetings and it's been a joy to watch him. Additions, corrections, implications to the agenda, I have none, is that correct? Thank you. Citizen statements, I do not have a sign up sheet, so I do not believe there are any citizen statements tonight. Oh. Maybe I didn't pick it up.
(inaudible).
Nice try. (laughter). Fred, thanks, thank you very much. Wonderful. We do have one citizen statement tonight. And when you come up to the podium, if you would state your name and address so we can be sure to get it back to you appropriately, your response. This is from Lisa Legori, is that correct?
Legori.
Legori, very good. You'll have three minutes, which we hope is ample time to tell us what you need to. Thank you.
Lisa Legori, 12172 Far Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri 63146. And I have three children attending Craig School. And I want to begin by thanking Parkway Administration and Board of Ed for, as you know, we're overcrowded and I heard that recently we've been hired, Nicole Evans has hired, I think, eight additional TAs to help with our overpopulated school and overcrowded classrooms. But I am speaking tonight to voice my concerns regarding the overcrowded Craig School and AYP. Craig is currently at school improvement level three corrective action. Craig is also one of the most overpopulated elementary schools in Parkway with a roughly 40 percent transient rate. These factors are directly contributing to our AYP status. Now, I have many problems with DESI and AYP. For example, corrective action appears to be taken only with Title I schools and is delayed for non-Title I schools. Student's progress is compared from one year's grade level to the next year's grade level rather than comparing each student's growth from one year to the next. Not to mention the fact that their data on their website is very difficult for the average citizen to interpret. Parkway is implementing valuable programs at Craig, for example, the EIS teachers in kindergarten. Unfortunately, the success of this program, while immediate for the students, will not reflect on Craig for three more years when they are given the MAP test. And that's only if they don't move out of the Craig attendance area, which is likely. Craig School has wonderful and dedicated teachers, many whom are working in overcrowded classrooms, closets, project areas, and the cafeteria. These are not ideal learning environments for our at-risk population. I hope that you may find some time to tour Craig School this fall to see how the amazing staff is dealing with the overcrowding, lack of space, and the pressures of AYP, and most importantly, how this is affecting the children at Craig School. I ask tonight that as you determine new attendance areas in Parkway, you take Craig School into special consideration as we are a unique community. Please consider a more even distribution of our current transient population throughout the north area, lowering class sizes as promised in Proposition R, and allowing reading and ESOL teachers to teach in classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and you will receive a response in writing. And we appreciate the citizens who made statements tonight. Six point O, call for a closed session, none. Seven dot O, the approval of the agenda for August 10th, 2011. Could I have a motion and a second for the approval of the August 10th, 2011 agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven O. Eight O, resolutions, none. Nine O, communications. Nine point O one, calendar of meetings. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, September 21, 2011, here at Central Middle School, starting at 7:00 PM with the tax rate hearing, followed at 7:30 by the regular Board of Education meeting. Nine point O two, liaison reports. I know it's summer, does anyone have anything to report liaisons? Mr. Major, anything, we'll start down there at your end and come over this way.
Gulf Shores and Rock and Roll Hall of Fame.
(laughter). All important items.
Well, I got the chance to visit the scientists in residence. I attended one day when they're, they're actually having a meeting and I got to tour, finally got to tour the new science wing for Parkway Central, which was great. And then they had a great reception at Maryville. With that included the staff at Maryville that participated, as well as the St. Louis Public Schools that were participating as well. And I also went to the kickoff meeting for new high school teachers. So that was very interesting to meet the new crop coming in and listen, listening to Kathy Blackmore address them and get them ready to integrate into the Parkway system.
Thank you. Helen?
Fishing in Wyoming. On July 20th, I was pleased to tour with Mike Martins and Dr. Marty, the, all the construction that was going on, I appreciated the hard hat for a hard head. So I was very impressed with the fact that all this work and dust and everything and was going on and not thinking that, how is this going to be completed in time? But I guess they're there, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the results yet. And I was just, I was very impressive to tour the several schools that we did. Also, while we were touring one of the schools, I'm not going to mention it because I, and I'm not going to mention the date either, but a letter was found in the ceiling of one of the schools. And I requested to have a copy of that letter. And I would like to read a portion of that letter that was found in the ceiling of one of the schools. This is a letter to the parents regarding a discipline problem.
What's the date?
I'm not going to give that yet.
Okay.
Sorry. To the parents of, I'm not going to mention the student's name. A detention is a period of time to be served by a student after the regular school dismissal time. This period, which occurs between 2:30 and 3:30 PM, is provided for those students who have failed to fulfill properly their responsibilities during the school day. Blank has been assigned detentions on the following dates. Thursday, October 4th, 1979. We have found it necessary to take this action because of the following misconduct. Running in the halls. It is important that arrive in room E02 by 2:30 PM with materials for study or reading. Students failing to appear for detention, those who arrive late, and those who refuse to cooperate with the detention supervisor will be subject to further disciplinary action. Upon completion of the detention period, all students should report either to the bus loading area to ride the 3:30 PM activity bus, or to the front of the building for personal transportation. Please sign below and have your child return this form to the office. This letter was from East Junior High School Principal. Dr. Sartino.
That is funny. How would it be funny to have the Alumni Association look up that child?
And have him come. I will, I will keep a note of this, yes.
See if they know where he is.
In addition to that, just a side note, sometimes as a parent, and we have students here in Parkway, we also have, sometimes our students are, our children's friends and they keep in touch with us and so forth. And I just want to mention that Angie Tozer, who is a senior right now at Parkway Central High, I was speaking with her mother the other day, and the family and Angie is going to appear on MTV on September 23rd at 3 o'clock. So anyone interested in seeing one of our students on MTV, September 23rd at 3 o'clock. And as a side note, my own son was on the Times Square billboard today in New York City. And it had to do with the contest, so.
Okay.
Thank you. In the sixth grade, I was a stair monitor. So if you skip stairs, I wrote you up.
Thought it was if someone stared at you.
And I even got to wear a little white belt. I looked a little bit like a policeman, so it was kind of an honor. Dee, do you have any?
Are you going to write me up? No, not. About two weeks ago, I don't remember the exact date because I didn't write it down, we had a, another Project Parkway Steering Committee meeting that was very well attended for being in the middle of summer break. It's just amazing how far this has come. We were talking about, you know, we've used the metaphor of the house. The house is built and where are we now? And I had a little bit different perspective than some of the other people. I felt, some people felt we were painting the walls and moving in furniture. I felt like we were installing the wiring, so I'm not sure, maybe that's from where I sit. But it was, it was a great meeting and it's just so neat to see what came from nothing and where we are now.
Thank you. That is good. Sam?
I attended with Chris and Beth and Dr. Marty and the administrative staff, the all district administrators meeting. I did that a number of years ago and I was always excited to be with fellow administrators and starting and kicking off the school year. It was exciting as a board member this year as well. It was upbeat, it was exciting, it was enthusiastic, and the presentations were excellent. Mr. Jacob always has an interesting story to tell and he brings everyone about in some jovial manner. Dr. Marty, you were exceptional in giving your message to the administrators that day and I think you sent the message very well that there's a lot to be accomplished and we're going to become greater because we're going to be different. And that really helps us all to have a frame of reference of where we're going for the year. A major part of it was the extension of Project Parkway. As you mentioned, we accomplished two years of getting to where we are now. And when you see the format of accomplishing mission and making our promise to live our commitments as well in a format that really makes a difference in terms of achieving the goals and objectives and the constituencies that will be involved in the process, it's outstanding. You'll see part of it tonight. And everyone who was involved in that and getting it to that point on one sheet, this is the plan for the year, is outstanding. So you should be complimented for that and we really appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Sam. And Beth?
The day after we had the all district administrators, we had the privilege of welcoming our new teachers. And once again, Chris told a great story. And it was so great to watch our new teachers and all of their enthusiasm. Liz Morrison and her coworkers put together some great programs that I saw a couple hours that I was there. And the teachers, the warmups and the getting to know yous, the teachers just jumped right in. They were all so excited to be there and they were all so willing to share and to put themselves into their training. And it was, it was just so rewarding. I really look forward to seeing these new teachers in action. Then I also went on the summer construction tour, as Sam mentioned. And when we came in here, this, this place looked like a raw construction zone. Everything was completely covered, the ceilings were all taken apart, the theater was all dismantled. And within a few weeks, I think that was around the 5th of July, here we are and we're all back, put in shape. So thank you guys over there for all that. This is all.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, it has been a busy summer and particularly Helen, I mean Beth and I have had an opportunity to attend many different functions together and I get a little bit of a feel how busy you guys are in the summer, even though it, school's out and school's only six days away, at least for students. Teachers and that are already in motion. So I'd like to thank the board for everything they do and it's wonderful as we start this new year together. There are 102 new teachers that are part of Parkway now and all of them were in attendance for that kickoff meeting. We've had a couple of other kickoff meetings with food services. It's unbelievable when you see some of the gifts, or maybe not gifts, but recognition given out. People that have been around in Parkway from 25 years down to five years were given recognition. And of course, then today, we had the Transportation Department and that was fun to, if you get a chance, you need to see the video of Bus 34. It's pretty revealing about bus drivers and kids. And they have some unique things to say about our bus drivers, all of them positive and good. I think that's it for liaison reports then. I'm sorry.
Just a moment. I just wanted to interrupt and ask you if the story got out about, I think there were three of us that got in trouble when we were all in kindergarten and people were wondering how we made it on the board when we got in trouble.
Yes, we did have the Kindergarten Institute, which was, I think, the first time we've done that and I, hopefully that story didn't get out.
Okay.
Well, no.
I won't mention it then.
I had a love for speed at an early age and I got on a tricycle and I ran through three young ladies and got in a lot of trouble. Lost my tricycle. Thank you for reminding me. Ten point zero, action items, we have 10.01 to 10.29. Are there any questions or items that need to be pulled to action or closed? If not, then let me ask for a motion and a second that we approve the action items 10.01 through 10.29. All in favor?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, that's why you're there.
Someone's second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Eleven point O, action items, there are none. Twelve point O, 12.01, attendance area update. And we have several people that will be involved in this, I believe, Desi Kershoffer, Kathy Blackmore, Bonnie Maxi, Steve Colombo, I don't know, well, Mark Stockwell and Will Rosa, if he's not on Bus 34.
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, board members, Secretary Calanda, Superintendent Marty. Yes, Chris, we will try to reunite you with your tricycle soon and we'll see if we can work on that. And Helen, I couldn't help but think as you were telling, reading your detention slip that maybe the student was going to be Tom Applebaum.
He never served it either.
He would not have served it. Very good. Well, it's a privilege to be able to present to you tonight and give you an update on where we are with attendance areas. But maybe more importantly and, or at least equally as important, just the idea of, if you take a look at our first slide, the Project Parkway, and all the initiatives that are coming forward and have moved forward through the years. And we're getting close to culminating to another decision very soon, hopefully. And, you know, just a reminder, some of the work of the groups before and some of the great things that we've done as far as moving forward with our start end times, our extending elementary days, and also the full day kindergarten that stems from Project Parkway as well. So we're in full implementation of many things and in the process, so it's an exciting time. But tonight, I want to give you an update on where we are. As you recall, we, we've been working through some issues, particularly in the north attendance area over the last couple of years and a lot of dialogue through Project Parkway, community meetings, many hours spent looking and responding to community feedback at our Project Parkway meetings along the way. And so one of the things that we decided to do was certainly try to address some of the overcrowding and some of, you heard the citizen statement earlier this evening. And it's just a reality of what we're working through. And so we've been working on a process to remedy that. And just to recap a little bit, since May, if you recall, we sent the survey to the north central area. The board was then given a, at the board retreat, a brief presentation on the technology available through the Versitrans Corporation and also the change process that we would use. The board was given an opportunity at that time to look at the survey feedback and also review the current guidelines. Throughout the summer, district administration had worked to develop some scenarios with hopes of presenting them this fall. And in August of this year, the Connections Task Force meeting was held on August 3rd and I also want to give you an update on some feedback we received from that and the process we used during that meeting. Just to review, I know we did this in May and again in June, but I want to review the idea of creating the neighborhood planning units. It's such an instrumental part of the change process. The NPUs were the small pockets of the neighborhoods that are developed in order so you don't have to move a large area at a time, so they're broken down by natural boundaries in some of the board guidelines. So groups of students or groups of a subdivision or complex would be circled in this unit planning. I'm going to show you an example of what that looks like in just a second. So then the next process would be, once you do that, you identify a core NPU. And the core NPU is the area that is closest to the school, the neighborhoods that really border the school. And it's also the area that Will would say it's real close to our kind of walking distance area around the school. And it wouldn't make sense for that NPU to be attached to any other school. So with that in mind, as we develop scenarios, we wanted to keep those core areas right there with their schools, which makes complete sense, and then any bordering NPUs were areas that we linked to that. And I'll show you in just a second what I mean by that. And then we continued to add or subtract those neighborhood planning units until we were getting near a desirable enrollment number and so, in trying to balance the numbers. So with this example, I'll point up here, if you look right where the laser is pointing there, it's going to be a little hard to tell, but that's Ross School right there. And this is just an example of how the NPUs are developed. And if you see the lines, the dark line that goes around Ross, right there, that area is the core area. So I'm going to highlight that for you. So that, that would be your core Ross area. And just to give you a context, this is the highway going up and down, and then Olive Boulevard right there and Fifi right up there. So as we developed it, the next thing we would want to do is take the areas, the next, if you can kind of see, each one of them is assigned a number. So there's Ross 9, 10, and so on, 8, there's Ross 4. So each of them were given a number. And what we wanted to do was add the neighboring ones, as we did. So you would take the core areas that border, and these are current Ross attendance areas. And we'd just continue to add those until you had a little bit, you're really expanding the core area to keep it going. And again, if you look down here, then you can see there's Bell, this is the Bell Reeve attendance area below there. And so if you're wondering why this one does touch up there, but it's split by Olive Road, and we tried to keep those natural borders in place as well. So that's, that's the general idea about developing, using the NPUs and then starting to build what the attendance area might be. So that's the process we used to develop these. So I kind of want to see if there's any questions about that process or anybody need any more knowledge or understanding of developing the NPUs and using them to kind of, as our guide. Okay? So if you look, these are our current north boundaries and each color assigned a school. If you look up, there's a, we have four attendance areas, or three attendance areas in the north area, and then River Bend is the bordering in the central attendance area. And if you take a look, if you, River Bend looks like it's a huge attendance area, but if you, if I can kind of slide the laser up the back, there's no residential back in that area. So that's the River Flats area. So what we did is, once we developed an NPU and the core areas and the surrounding areas for each school, tried to identify those border areas that maybe could make, an adjustment could be made, or students could be shifted in those NPUs. And basically, if you take a look at the highlighted areas, those are some of the areas that when we expanded the cores out, did not get touched. So if you look up here, this, this is part of the McKelvey current attendance area, this is part of Craig. If you look right, right through there where the laser is, that's approximately where Bennington is. You can see that all, all three school areas border that area. And then up and down, this area is currently Ross and that's Old Farm, and then McKelvey right in there is Seven Pines. So those were all areas that when we, when we branched out each core area and developed the, or kept adding the NPUs, those were the areas that were more likely to be impacted. And I want to make sure that you, we recognize that, keep in mind, trying not to impact too many schools in this process, but, but actually still address the overcrowding, we were able to narrow it down to those schools being impacted. So it would only be McKelvey, Craig, Ross, and River Bend would be the schools with, with River Bend, I'm going to get into more specifics about that, but with River Bend being the school not losing students but gaining students, so. Any questions? Yeah?
Bell Reeve is not included.
That's correct.
And why is that?
Part of the reasoning, logic behind that was the idea of only impacting so many school communities at the time. We did, when we first went through this and we were presented with the Versitrans, there started to be a development that kind of dwindled south. And as, there was a major domino effect. As soon as you started dipping into one area, then you would go down to the next area. And so there was, all of a sudden, by moving further south, you were impacting many, many, many more school communities.
Are they at capacity? Are they overcrowded?
Bell Reeve?
Are they?
Bell Reeve is right at about their desirable number. They're right around 400 students, so.
Well, I think I've mentioned this before, where, you know, I know, this is our focus, I know that. Where I live, my kids go to Bell Reeve. The school to the, the neighborhood to the east of me and to the west of me, it's like every other neighborhood, north, central, north, it's just, I'm not sure when those decisions were made, but I just wonder if we need to look at that too. I mean, it really doesn't have anything to do with overcrowding.
Right.
But maybe bus efficiency, I don't know. It's just, it's illogical and no one understands it. I've even asked neighbors who lived there at the time, they have no idea how it was decided, so.
And I'm not sure either, the evolution of those attendance areas, but for, what we were trying to focus on was making sure we, you know, the issue of the overcrowding and examining that. And so that was really the focus. So we didn't get deeper into that, but I mean, that would be certainly.
Maybe that's the future, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I do think.
This is the hotspot, but.
Dee, if we've learned anything, that we, with the development of the NPUs, it is a lot more manageable way to start looking at those things. Before, it was kind of a random draw of where things would be. And so I think we do have a process that will help us address those very concerns. So.
I was curious, that's all.
And some of that did, some of that did come up in the survey data too.
Yeah.
We recognized that, but it wasn't, it wasn't kind of addressing the issue that we really needed to deal with, with the immediacy of it.
I was just curious. Thanks.
Well, Desi, you mentioned the desired number.
Mm-hmm.
And I think when we were early in the process, that was kind of a, an ad hoc determination.
Yep, we tried to get a number.
Have we defined the capacity in any?
Here's what we, we, this summer, kind of took a tour of each of those buildings and also took a kind of a step back at what the original design and purpose of, of the design of each building was. And you, if you think about, most of our elementary school buildings have a basic design of four classrooms per grade level. And so, and built at a time when you probably could say, we're going to have 25 kids in a classroom. a classroom, 100 per grade level, and then all of a sudden, you're talking 600 kids, you know, at six grade levels. And so as we've had, made decisions to reduce class sizes, and we want to keep it in a range somewhere, starting at 17 with our kindergartners, you know, and ranging it all the way up to a target range of about 22, 23, we want to stay within that range. So that greatly reduces your building capacity as well. Plus, we've added a lot of specialized programs, and education has changed, needs of kids have changed over the years, and a mission that says we're going to meet all needs requires us to do that as well. But the bottom line is, when you take a walk through a building, and I can use really Craig as an example, they probably have 24 classrooms that are designated to general at, when you start to take out the gymnasium, the art classroom, the music classroom, there's about 24 classrooms left. So if you look at our ranges of numbers, of 17 being a nice target area for our lowest, our youngest students, all the way up to around 23, and we start to, really, there is a broad range when you start to take that lower number and multiply it by 24, and the upper number and multiply it by 24. So you're talking about a desirable range, just in the mathematical way, of about 408 in the lower end to about 470 at the top end. So, and that's in a, that's in a building that has about 24 classrooms. So, and McKelvey has a couple more because they've had additions over the years, so they have a little bit more capacity than that. But, so that's a wide range. But that's probably the truest target area. Now, you look at the top end, that only happens if you happen to get kids in the perfect group for their grade level. And so we haven't figured out a way, unless, I don't know, maybe somebody else has, but I haven't figured out a way that we can get a class of kindergartners born by 17 and multiplying by four, and then that would be our group coming through. So we haven't been able to find some kind of pill that would make a cohort class perfect to fit that, you know, that maximum range, or else that would be, that would be the most efficient number to use as the upper 400 number, but we're probably more around the range of about, considering the programs in our schools, about, probably somewhere between 400 to 450 kids would be a good number for, a solid number for our elementary schools, with a school like McKelvey maybe being able to accommodate more than that because of their size and additional classrooms.
Okay. And I think the comment earlier probably touched on an aspect that I don't know if our survey really got into. We had a survey question that, or a survey factor that was to equalize the load as nearly as possible in each building according to facilities available. Now, I think to my mind, we just talked about physical space, but there is also a component of-
Absolutely, a resource component.
The demographics of the students that are coming in, and, you know, high mobility is more work, I think, fair to say. And that would impact capacity in some form or another. Do you have a way of accounting for that in these considerations?
Well, not, no. When we use our guidelines as far as guiding us through this work, we didn't necessarily see that in our guideline work, but we did see it in our survey results and some of the comments that came in from the community and kind of echoed some of what you heard tonight. And it was part of our discussion, but as the ultimate scenarios played out, it was really hard to keep in mind the other board guidelines and upholding those and doing that. So you have to compromise, something's going to give if you do that. You're going to be taking students from another place across our district. And so, and I guess that would probably be another kind of bigger topic issue, because if you wanted to do that, then I think you're talking about expanding a district-wide issue that, as far as the demographics of the entire district, not just these three or four school communities.
Okay, thank you.
Desi, do you have actual enrollment figures right now for these four schools?
Let me see if I have those in my folder. The enrollment numbers exactly for these schools? I don't, I don't know if I have today's. I have about a week ago when we did this project.
Current as of the day.
That's mine. I think I have a real clean copy. Okay. Oh, you have today's?
By school.
That would be better, because I have some from two weeks ago, but they change. I mean-
That's what I was going to say.
They've updated, you know, every time we do this, we're trying to work with the most current numbers, but they fluctuate. Did you want any particular, or did you want the current enrollment numbers for these schools?
For McKelvey, Craig, Ross.
Let me get, Craig is at 539. Ross is at 444. And River Bend is at 237.
Thank you.
So those are some of the balancing issues and equalizing the load number as well. So you see quite a difference, quite a different range than the one I just presented to you as what would be a desirable range. Some under and some well over. So let me review what we did at the task force meeting on August 3rd. We did review the community survey feedback. We also reviewed three working scenarios of attendance areas, of possible attendance areas. And then what the group did is, we asked them to identify the pros and cons of each of those scenarios. We also discussed and tried to, or we did receive feedback on the process for what we would like to use as our decision-making process, using feedback and a matrix, and I'll explain the matrix process in a little bit, or a matrix that would help guide our decision. And then we also discussed and received some feedback on implementation parameters and what we would do as far as grandfathering voluntary student transfers, siblings, and those sort of things, too. So we had some good discussion and dialogue around that, and I'll present some of the feedback from that meeting in just a bit here. So just to kind of go over what the three scenarios, kind of some of the highlights of those, and I've already mentioned that it included four schools, so it included Craig, McKelvey, River Bend, and Ross. And again, mentioning that there were no changes to the students currently enrolled at River Bend. The neighborhood planning units, when we looked at those, there's, between the three schools, McKelvey, Ross, and Craig, there's about, I think there were 54 neighborhood planning units, so those smaller, little outlined areas. And out of those, we had a range in the three scenarios of eight to 10 neighborhood planning units that would be impacted by the scenarios. And in that, there was a range of about 200 to 250 elementary students who changed schools, and also a range of about 80 to 180 elementary students, depending on the scenario and which NPUs were impacted, that would change from the north to the central attendance area. So it's a wide range, but you can see, even though there may be a small NPU on that map that's outlined, it still may have a heavy populated, it may be a heavy populated area. So for example, one of our NPUs had 70 students in a very small geographic area, but highly populated. So if you move that to any school, all of a sudden, you're taking 70 away and putting 70 in. And the reason you wouldn't split an NPU, or that NPU in particular, is because you'd be really trying, you'd be dividing a line down a hallway almost to do that. And so you have a, and I'm talking about like an apartment complex, that all of a sudden, you might have a neighbor go this way and one go that way. So it was really difficult to decipher whether Apartment A or Apartment B should go. So we couldn't, couldn't get the NPUs down that precise. But this is kind of a, the basic rundown of what the, what all three of them had in the range of areas that would be affected and the students that would be impacted. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the development of a decision-making matrix here. And what we did is, we looked at, in this decision process, we certainly wanted to keep our district goals at the forefront, and so we believe our first three that have to deal with the capable, curious, and confident learners. And then also, we certainly wanted to look at being responsibly and efficiently allocating resources and being, using personnel, time, facilities allocated based on the mission, so, based on the needs of our students. So wanted to keep those in mind. Also, review of the board guidelines again, and then the survey results to establish the criteria. I know the board was given these survey results, and the chart's pretty difficult to see up there, but the main point for the chart is that there was a ranking kind of issued based on the survey results and how response did. So we were trying to establish what the community felt and the importance of the guidelines were, which was really difficult to do, because on one of our tables here, basically, everything was very important to, extremely important to the community. So there wasn't a strong, big separation between what was important, and kind of thought that that might be the case. So the good news for that is, they're probably decent guidelines overall, and people, they're reasonable, and people think that they're all important. But when asked to just pick their top three out of those, that's the bottom chart, the bottom ranking one, and so the top three was to avoid moving a child from one school for one year only, and to support and further the neighborhood school concept, and then coordinate attendance areas of elementary and secondary schools. So those three rows to the top in that category. So we tried to use the community feedback to start to distinguish a rating for this criteria. And so I'm going to talk a little bit, and if you bear with me on this, this could be a little confusing, and hopefully the follow-up chart will help explain some of this. But we wanted to get to a point with these three scenarios to have, what process would we use to determine what best meets our needs and supports our goals? So the first thing we wanted to do is prioritize the guidelines and also use our goals. So making a matrix, we use the board-approved goals. We use the community survey results to prioritize the guidelines. And then we wanted to establish a weight to those survey results and the goals with 10 being a maximum number. And the weight is going to be applied in order to use a rating system and multiply out which one seems to rise to the top. And so there would be, for example, if I looked at the, one of the board guidelines that say, from moving one, the top one, and second one, and second one, avoid moving a kid from one school from one year to another, would that rate 1? If you looked at the scenario, would it be, that's the least extent it does it? It does it to some extent, or is it the most extent? And 3 being the highest? And so then it would multiply out by whatever rating was assigned to that to kind of give you an idea or gauge. And so I'm going to flip to the chart, and I don't know, I think you all have the PowerPoint up on your things, okay? Because I think you'll be able to see it a little better on your computers. So the weighting system in this matrix, for example, if you look at the student learning opportunities based on goals 1, 2, and 3, our board-approved goals, with a weight of 10. And then also, our second, our other board goal, goal number 6, allocating resources efficiently and effectively, or responsibly, now there, we put those as our top priorities to support our board goals. And then the rest of the ranking is based on what our survey results were on our, on our board guidelines. So if we use avoid moving students for one year only as an example, if scenario 1 did that to the most extent, it would rank out as a 3. If the second scenario did that to some extent, it would get a 2. And believe me, these are, these are just examples and numbers plugged in to give you a sample of what it was. And so if the third scenario was the least likely to support that board guideline, it would be given a 1 and then multiplied out. And once you did that for each column, then you would total up the columns down at the bottom, and it would help you give an idea of which scenario, which scenario supported the board goals the best and which scenario supported our board guidelines as well. The idea would be to use this with either the Connections or both, the Connections Committee and also Superintendent's Council, because it really works best when a small group gets together and decides that, can actually talk about what that means to them, and then try to come to some consensus about which one they believe would support it to the most extent, some extent, least extent. And if you look at safety on there, you know, safety was certainly on the first round of survey results was one of the top priorities, which totally makes sense. So if all of them, all the scenarios supported safety, and we were going to transport kids to school safely, and our stops were safe, you would, the ranking may be the same. So they may all receive a 1, 2, or 3, it really would kind of nullify each other. So that could happen for some of these guidelines, too. They might, they might equally support a board guideline as well. So any questions about that? I know it's a little, maybe a little bit confusing, especially if it's the first time running through it. We did do this, I'll talk a little bit, we did kind of play it out with the Connections Committee, and we did ask them for feedback on the process. By using this, the one, the one part about it, we wanted to emphasize that this isn't, just because a number says that it may have equaled out to be the best scenario, that wouldn't be the final say in it. It would also, we would also need to consider our community feedback as well. So there wouldn't, using this would just be a tool to help guide a final decision and to help guide a process, but it wouldn't necessarily be a final decision-maker. And I can come back to this if we, as we go through. So just to reemphasize, there's the district goals as our top weighted categories, and then the attendance guidelines in rank order in the way they came in in our survey results. And then you can take a look at the weight based on the feedback from the community survey, again, based on a priority. So part of the implementation discussion, we wanted to talk about, our survey results indicated, you know, from our comments mostly, that they certainly, community wanted us to consider grandfathering students if any changes were to be made. And so the discussion centered around the 5th through 12th grade, and here's kind of our working recommendation would be to grandfather 5th through 12th grade, that they would be given an automatic special assignment. In other words, they wouldn't, usually you have to have a written thing that's signed off by both principals and the assistant superintendent, but that students who wish to continue attending their same school or their same attendance area would be given an automatic in the 5th through 12th grade. And if a student is under a current special assignment at school, that that would also be honored as well. But we'd follow the special assignment guidelines as far as transportation goes, and not have a central area route for a neighborhood and a north area route, that any special assignment granted would be, the family would be, have to provide the transportation for that. And then if there were other requests, they would be taken case by case. For example, if there was a sibling still attending the school and the parents needed to keep them together, we would look at those case by case and then work with the families to see what would be the best solution to that. The other discussion centered around voluntary student transfers. The discussion was that for those schools that were impacted by this change, that there would be no new enrollments across the board, and that we would look at possible moves of current VST students in the program, too. But the bottom line is that, you know, this is going to impact all the students, whether or not they're in a transfer program or whether or not they're resident students, so that all would be impacted to some extent. So we were looking at a timeline, because we wanted Superintendent's Council and the Connections Task Force to be able to use that matrix that I demonstrated earlier to help select a recommendation. And then in the upcoming months, this month and next, that Superintendent Council continues to review the district goals, the feedback that we received from the Connections Task Force, the survey results, and the matrix results, and our board guidelines to help select a recommendation to bring to this board in September. And so in September, we'd like to update and review a proposal of attendance areas with this board. And then September, really late September, early October, we'd like to go to the schools that are impacted. And so we've picked some dates for meeting, so you can see at Craig, September 26, McKelvey, September 27, Ross, October 4, and River Bend, October 11. We want to hold public meetings at those four schools for the community to see the proposal and provide us feedback. And then in November, December, we'd like to bring back a final proposal for attendance areas. And in the winter, spring months, provide an opportunity for families to transition if they're moving schools, to meet the folks at their new schools, and have some open houses and just that time to learn about another school. And then August of 2012, we'd hope to have some of our overcrowding, well, I'd say all of our overcrowding issues resolved in those north area schools that are really feeling it. And we know our two biggest right now are Craig and McKelvey by far, and the right thing to do for the learning environment is alleviate some of that and make some changes. So with that, open it up to any thoughts, questions, and also if anybody else has anything to add this time. to add this time, feel free to jump in.
I have a question. I don't know how much of an impact this would be. Is that happening? You can't hear me. I'm sorry. I don't know how much of an impact this will be, but has the factor of the Turner case been taken into consideration with numbers?
It really hasn't, Helen. Because we, it's just so, we don't know what's going to happen. I think ultimately, what we'd like to do is even, we'd like to still, all county school districts and through cooperating school districts and working together, districts in the area would like to, if the Turner cases, if there isn't anything established and it kind of holds the way it is, we'd still like to be able to set some parameters on where students go, where they assign. Right now, the, probably the scariest part for most of our districts, our neighboring districts and us, is that it says they can select the school that they want to go to. So we would hope that we could funnel that process and streamline it so we can make some decisions to distribute students throughout, and maybe even use our current, the way the transfer program works now, where students in certain zones go to certain attendance areas. So we might be able to work with them, and I know that's a question that's out there, though. But this was done with our current students that are enrolled in our schools right now, and with our current students that are with the transfer program as well.
Great. Thank you.
What is the impact on northeast middle and central middle in terms of projected enrollments?
Yeah. And, well, it'll kind of funnel down if students still elect to do the automatic special assignment and go there. I mean, let's just say, the worst case would be that they, that everyone says, I'm going to get my own transportation and continue to go to northeast middle. Then it would phase out through the grade levels as the students came up. But I do have here, Sam, some of, if, the opposite, if everybody said, okay, we moved and we're going to go. So the shift in the option would range anywhere from 42 to 97 stu-, and this is current number. So you're going to have to, you know, have a plus, minus 10, 15 kids on any one of these ends, based on what enrolls for next year. So you're talking anywhere from around 40 to 100 students from northeast middle to central middle, depending on which scenario you use. And then you would talk about from North High, anywhere from 73 students, 70-ish to 140. So that would be your range if they all picked up and moved.
Is there any idea on projected enrollments for the north area for those schools affected in terms of the next five years? Is it going to continue to grow, or will attrition take care of the population, the student population numbers?
I'm going to ask, is Nathan still around? Just in case, Nathan.
Yeah, can you say it one more time? I thought it was a funny question.
Basically, what are we projecting in the north area in terms of additional students in the next four to five years? Do we see continued growth?
Yes, yes, continued growth. Not so much for Bell Reeve, but definitely for Craig, for McKelvey, Big Time, those two, and then which one am I missing?
Ross.
Yeah, Ross. I'm trying to remember. I'm not, I'm not so sure.
Some of the projections are up, but it's not, I mean, it's not a huge increase.
Okay, so, so the numbers that will end up with, if this does go into the process and the plan, the numbers, and additional numbers won't affect the schools that much to make a difference for needed change in the future?
Well, I'll tell you what, in the scenarios that we looked at, I mean, there's, since there's a range in those students, it really depends. And so that's why it's really, it was really important to get a clear ranking for those board guidelines, and it was, you know, the idea of not moving a kid again, and to me, that's sustainability in whatever we propose. And so that would be an interpretation of that guideline, that we don't, you know, we don't want to come back to you in a year and say, yeah, well, let's make this adjustment, and these kids just started another school. So, so it would be real important to get below the, you know, the top range, and a little cushion in there for a possibility of increased enrollment.
Well, that's great, yeah. So it'll be sustained over a period of time, then?
Correct.
I'll take you back to that, and back to Bell Reeve again. Dr. Tyson, what are the projections for Bell Reeve? You said it's not growing, but is it declining? Is it going to stay the same?
I think it's either flat or maybe a little bit one way or the other, but I would say I have projections of growing here, but, no, I believe it's relatively flat for four or five years.
Because we wouldn't want a Riverbend situation to happen at Bell Reeve when we're going through all this. We'd need to look far ahead, so.
That's right. We're not projected to get into those kind of numbers with Bell Reeve at all. So you're talking about, from what I've seen in the four years, about a 50 maximum reduction at Bell Reeve, if any. So a gradual, and that's, and I know, Nathan, you could talk a little bit about this, we need to, but that's, we're talking four or five years out, and those projections are really tough to make. But over the next three years, there's only a shift of seven to eight students.
But these things can swing so quickly, because the last time, and none of us were on the board at the time, but the last time this was discussed, when the board made no boundary changes, it was all the south area.
That's right.
And now, and the north area was declining. And it's just really interesting to watch how the pendulum has swung.
Well, it is, and you, I was, when those last discussions were taking place around 2002, 2003, I was at North High at the time, and I remember thinking about how I was going to have maybe conversations about teachers that we would lose, based on the enrollment projections. Because North High was supposed to be somewhere in the neighborhood of around 1150. We were currently around 1300, and it was projected to go down to 1150. And yet, here we are, eight years later, at closer to 1500 instead of that 1150 mark. So it's really tough to go beyond two to three years, I would say. Nathan, would you?
Yes, and projecting enrollment, actually, it's just a difficult thing for anyone to do, and what most districts seem to be, is historical pattern, and you basically use the last four or five years of historical data to project in the future, but if you have one, you know, crazy thing happen, all of a sudden, that twists the whole paradigm, and then, and then you're looking at different projections. But yes, I would agree, that's four or five years is really hard to predict out. I would say we're obviously most comfortable in our projections for the, whatever the next year is, but then, once we get into four or five years.
And I, you know, as our discussions evolved through Project Parkway over the last couple of years, I mean, the topic of economics kept coming up as the possible reason for many of these increases in enrollments, too. And so that's, there's, you know, hopefully, we'll get some good news and some turnaround on that as well in the years to come to kind of level things out.
Right.
Yeah.
Desi, can you talk again about the transfer students, the three overcrowded schools?
Mm-hmm.
Can you give me some kind of idea as to how the transfer students are in each of those three schools? And since they're not neighborhood kids, if it would make sense, you know, to have them not necessarily just move to Riverbend, but kind of more spread out within the district?
Yeah, because we would have capacity at other schools to do that. And so that was some of our conversation, too, to look at the possibility of reassigning those students to other places. The reality of it is, there's not a ton. And so that's something our, you know, that was part of the survey feedback, is that there was quite a misconception that they, the schools were overcrowded because there were transfer students coming in. But the maximum that I had on numbers for transfer students was at McKelvey. They had the highest number at the time, and it was 21. And so, and that was-
21 students?
21, yeah, transfer students. And so, and that number will decrease as the fifth graders move out as well.
And we, a number, a few years back, the board determined that we would take kindergarteners and first graders. And because of the conditions of overcrowding in the north area, we are, we are placing no new voluntary transfer students due to the demographics, other than siblings. If there are siblings, we honored keeping families together. So that's what has held the number down in the north area.
So it would be a very minimal move at this point, because if you think about not taking any kindergarteners or first graders already, so you're at zero at those grade levels, your highest grade level's at the fifth grader, so if you have seven of those move out, you're only going to have a few kids left in the building that are being transferred from the city. So it's a, it's a pretty small number to be able to make an impact on where we are.
My other question had to do with an impact of changing schools that would be on our special ed kids. Is there any, is there a greater negative impact on kids who might have a bit more trouble adjusting to a new environment? Did we drill down to the numbers?
I think our schools are pretty appropriately suited to take care of the needs of students. And we've had, I know Dr. Columbo's been involved, and Dr. Muirath also have been involved in our discussion, so I think if we had a major concern, I think, here's, and you fill in the gaps of, the way I would look at that is, we have processes in our schools and through the IEP process, that we're going to meet the needs of a certain kid. And so if, and if it means that that student, you know, if through the IEP process and through discussions, that's, that's, that's what we do now. So if, you know, if a student has to stay, or a change of placement has to occur, it's through a process. And so I don't know that that would change our process that we use to determine those.
No, and I think what, what would happen is, there are some kids in those schools that probably require specialized programs of one sort or another. But the reality of it is, at this point in time, I don't think Craig, Ross, or McKelvey are considered to have centers where we're taking kids from one place and sending them there. So there's no program at those schools that would require them to stay there, for the most part. And if it did, then busing would be provided to make sure they're accessing services and teachers that can meet their needs. But because of their crowding situation, we really don't have specialized programs in those buildings, similar to what we did with the VST program. We haven't had specialized programs where they're taking kids from other attendance areas. So they basically are working with the kids with, with kind of standard resource classrooms, and some of them have, have special ed rooms that serve kids on an extended basis, but those are all neighborhood kids. So it's a factor we'll consider, but I don't think it's one that's going to disrupt the process.
All right, well, then that leads to the question about the ESOL population. I don't know what kind of ESOL population they currently have at Riverbend. I would imagine most of those kids are at Green Trails. So-
If they are assigned to a special-
Considering the transient nature of the demographics in the north area, I think it would be a good assumption to think that we're going to be bringing in a lot more ESOL students to Riverbend. Well, I guess, all across the board, a big shift, but then Riverbend would probably be impacted, their program would be impacted.
I don't know if, I mean, I know the areas that we've kind of outlined that are, I would say border areas on a map.
Right, because I don't know what those areas are.
And that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm not sure about the makeup of ESOL students for that, but that would be a good thing to us to dig deeper to do, but you may know about the numbers more than I would.
That varies every year and continues to grow, but McKelvey, Craig, and Ross are, each have, are a center school because of the numbers in there within the attendance boundaries. So we do have a few students at Riverbend, and should that need change, every year, we analyze and look at, where's our population, and where do we need to place our staffing? But we have consistently had programs at Ross, Riverbend, and McKelvey because of the numbers.
Ross, Craig, and-
Pardon me, Ross, Craig, and-
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
With full-day kindergarten being offered, we know we have a lot of people taking advantage of that this year.
Yes.
How has it impacted these schools? I mean, I know, I know, I've heard that the McKelvey is, got way up there. Are they going to be able to accommodate these kids? Did we give them a choice to go to Riverbend? What did we do, anything? We just taken them and?
Yeah, they've, they've enrolled in their attendance area, and our numbers are pretty high in McKelvey, Craig, both, aren't they? We did use those numbers in these, in our scenario projections, too. So those kids, those current kindergarteners would be counted as we tried to move the MPUs around.
So to date, we have six full-day kindergarten sections at McKelvey, five at Craig, and four at Ross. So yes, they are housing them within their building, they have classrooms, they have juggled the space.
But how many kids are in each classroom?
However, you know, it-
And I know we, we have a week yet to go, so we have more coming, I'm sure.
That's correct. And numbers in mobile, schools with high mobility change at the end. So to know which way it'll go, in or out, is unknown.
Well, how, how high are the numbers for the classroom size?
Well, here's, here's the current one.
We haven't exceeded any of the classroom sizes.
Oh, you haven't?
No, we don't have not-
Because I heard you were talking about hiring TAs, so that said to me-
That's for third, for Craig's school, we are hiring at third grade and fourth grade.
Okay.
I'll look at that. I was just looking at the McKelvey kindergarteners, they had 112, so that was divided into six sections, which is about 18 students per classroom. So the numbers are still really good.
We maintain class size.
And they found a space to put them?
Craig also, Craig also a kindergarten, is it five sections?
Yes.
Right here, and so-
And they're right at 100. They lost one today.
So they're at 20 students, so they're at, they're at our target max for their, you know, the range for the kindergarten from, from the prop in 2006 was 17 to 20, to keep those class sizes there, so they're still within that range as well.
Okay. I didn't want to hear 25 or 28, so that's good.
We have no 25s across the district.
Okay.
Okay, so third and fourth grade, we're hiring teaching assistants to help with the excess numbers at, in those grade levels.
So third and fourth grade range from 23 to 24 students right now, and then they're assigning an extra adult into that room.
Okay. Thank you.
Which actually makes, if it's a student-teacher ratio, makes it much better than the other ones, although we know the reality of that's, that's probably not efficient or sustainable as well. I'm going to keep this with me, Joy. These are the most current stats, so we're up to date as of today.
Desi, since you have that in front of you, does that, Joy, does that have our current enrollment in the district? Just curious, it sounds like we have so much going on.
I just have the elementary.
Just the, okay.
The total enrollment in the district is almost, what, 97% accurate from our projection? So we were about 17,4, 17,400, with expected to be right around 17,5. So we're, we're kind of maintaining our enrollment right now, so which is, that's a real positive thing.
People can't afford to move.
We're glad.
Can't afford to stay, they can't afford to move.
All right, any further questions?
Can I thank, we thank the Connections Committee and all of the citizens that have put in time before getting this set up, before the Connections Committee even started. It's been a lot of work for everyone, and we know we're not going to make everybody happy. We're trying to be sensitive.
We're going to try.
We're going to try. And Dr. Marty, we really are going to appreciate your guidance through this process. He's been through this in the district he came from, so we're very happy about that.
I would just say I'm, I'm impressed with, with the work that's been laid here, having been through it. There's been some really good communication and some good efforts to set some criteria, which we'll get more into in the next month. And I think you saw, we already have plans to communicate this to the four schools immediately after the board meeting on September 21st.
And ultimately, I guess, from a school standpoint, curriculum standpoint, we, we want all our schools to be able to deliver what the kids need in an equitable way. And right now, I mean, when, when I read the numbers, I thought, I maybe heard a couple gasp when I went from 600 to 237, and-
We've been gassing for years over this.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I felt the collective air. I think if I had hair, it would have blown up a little bit at that time. So what's right for kids, ultimately.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that report, and we look forward to hearing more about the decisions that are made, and the feedback that we get back from the public, too, as we try to present to them our best efforts. And then we'll come to some decision later in the year. We appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we had some Boy Scouts here, but I, they left before I could acknowledge that they were here. Which troop are you from?
41.
Well, we welcome you here. Are you working on communication or citizenship? Well, we hope we're not too boring for you. Thank you. We welcome you here. Our next work session is 13.01. This is our preliminary discussion on special services and special education in the district. Conducting that will be Dr. Nathan Tyson, who's the coordinator of our program evaluations.
Do we have a break?
You know, while you're getting ready, could we just, we'll just take a five-minute break here and be back here at, well, five minutes. Looks to me like Kathy's going to address us first.
Start some.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Calanda. I am- I am here tonight because this is our first program evaluation of the year, and we have started a new process. So I wanted to remind all of us why we changed the process of program evaluation. And it began in 2008 with Project Parkway in its first years, where we were looking at current reality and assessing the different programs, not just curriculum, but other programs as well. And from that data in 2009, the Parkway Steering Committee decided that we needed a task force around this very specific topic. And what I have before you is still posted on our Project Parkway website. This committee was led by Sandy Jacobs and Jenny Markford. And what I have before you is their task force report on efficient use of existing resources. So what I want to just do right now to set the stage, there were 20 members from our community on this task force that created the changes to the program evaluation process. I've highlighted for you the context of this work and change, and the study groups found that although a policy might be in place, the manner in which that policy is implemented could vary from school to school. Similarly, various programs have been initiated in all schools, but may be implemented in different ways depending on the needs, readiness, or interest of each school. The question raised in the studies group is how to measure the effectiveness of programs when they are being implemented in different ways across the district. Likewise, Project Parkway Goal III Study Committee reviewed practices with operations and found similar inconsistencies and questions. It was also noted by the study groups that the implementation of programs and the decisions about how to allocate resources for programs has not been transparent to all stakeholders. So that is why we are standing here tonight with a new program evaluation. They included relevant data, what caused them to set that context and make their recommendations. I know I'm scrolling fast, but I wanted to get to this part. Their recommendations around connection to mission, vision, learning principles, and you'll see highlighted here. Additionally, the commitment statements, which had then been established, establish a priority for maintaining a culture of accountability. On their progress toward mission-driven goals and cultivate professional communities that utilize data to improve practice and accomplish goals. With these as commitments, our corresponding policies for budget planning, welcome Mark Stockwell, and program evaluation will need to be changed to be congruent with our commitment statements. Proposed process recommendations is to review these two policies yet once again, and we are waiting for Mark to get here. We will look at the budget policy, which is attached to this, and create a cycle and routine of program evaluation. So I'm going to hold up this document that Ms. Calanda has created and that you have seen. That can change, but we do have, have already created that cycle. I know you are aware of our commitments, and I've highlighted the ones that address program evaluation. So some of these recommendations Nathan and I have already started and working on with others. Also, it's important that we publish our program evaluations. We've heard that from many stakeholders, and they will be on our board docs, and they will be linked, as Carol's working on, to Goal Six and appropriate measurable objectives as these come to the board. And they need to follow a consistent format. Overarching success factors, our human and financial resources will be allocated to produce effective outcomes based on needs rather than simply even distribution. And I think we just heard a perfect example of that with our attendance boundaries. And then finally, in summary, we believe that in the age of accountability and transparency, we all need to work to hold ourselves accountable against our mission-related goals, as well as be transparent about decisions, especially resource allocation. It will be a challenge to help all staff members see revised program evaluation and budget planning processes as valuable structures rather than as a threat to position, school, or department. The benefit of having a more clearly defined program evaluation policy and guidelines, as well as having clear guidelines for the budget planning process, is that we will be able to communicate our successes in a more valid way and reveal the challenges we face and the needs we have in accomplishing missions in a balanced way. Set the context, that's why. What Nathan will do just tonight is give an overview of some of the changes that have already occurred around program evaluation. We will move into then your questions for special education and special services in Parkway. Next board meeting, it will be gifted and science, and then Dr. Marty will be presenting a program evaluation in maybe a little bit different format with our facilities, and I think he's been talking to you and others about his 2020 plan. So those will be the four we'll be looking at. Nathan will explain the process, and then we will move to your questions that you would like Nathan to look into during this program evaluation. Okay? Dr. Nathan Tyson.
Thank you, Kathy. And I want to let you know that I had practiced and was prepared for the formal greeting, but Kathy assured me that her formal greeting counted for both of us. So I'm just going to launch right now. If that's a violation of protocol, please let me know, and I'll be prepared for next time. All right, so here we go. So this is the preliminary discussion for special services, special school district program evaluation. And this is a work session. Now, this is a work session with the board. We had a work session with administrators and stakeholders in the summer, in July, with our special services department and members of the special school district. So those are, there were two work sessions. So we've already had one, and now we're having the board's work session. So the purpose of the program evaluation work session, now here I'm referring back to the one that we had in July, and I just want you to know what was shared with that group of stakeholders as we prepared for this work session. I just wanted to share with them that it was important that, you know, there's sort of three things that need to come out of our work session in the summer. And one was to prepare, plan, the research design. The next one was to gain clarity about who is actually responsible for which parts of the program evaluation. Program evaluation is quite a big undertaking when you look at it from beginning to end, and so a lot of people touch it. And so it's important to kind of know specifically who's doing what so that we can have a nice, smooth workflow. And then the third thing that was communicated in July was that really the point here, too, is that we start to communicate better, as Kathy referred to, we want to be very transparent about all of this. And so we want to communicate to the buildings that this is beginning now, this program evaluation is beginning, to let everyone know it's happening and to let them know that they should be involved with it and that, you know, if they want to participate, obviously we are all ears. So this is kind of our point, and we really want to be very collaborative. So three program evaluations this year, as Kathy mentioned, science gifted and special services. So here's our preliminary discussion for special services. And like I said, the collaborative process is key. We want to get as many people involved as possible, as practical, including teachers, department chairs, all the different stakeholder groups. And as you all know, as administrators, that, you know, obviously the greater level of collaboration, the more you increase individual and organizational learning, the better you increase communication, the more stakeholder involvement, all of that is great thing, all of that is great, and we want all of that to happen in our school district. So seven phases of program evaluation. I just kind of put this together to let you know sort of from beginning to end that we have quite a process here. And just to kind of run through the steps as I see them, the first phase here is the reflection phase. And that took place already in July with some of the stakeholders, and now it's taking place again here with our esteemed board. And so phase one is to reflect, and the two questions that we have, what do we want to know and how are we going to find out? That's really the point of this phase. It's really not that difficult. You know, what do we need to know? How are we going to get there? How are we going to find out? Phase two is the collection phase. So really, this is the part now where we take sort of what we've figured out in that reflection, what do we want to know, how are we going to find out? And we start to design the surveys and the other measurement tools. We locate data that we're going to need to start to answer some of those questions that we know we need to answer. And this is also the phase where we make sure that we properly collect the data. Phase three is dissect and detect. You know, we get a sort of a gaba data back with these surveys, and we have a gaba data. If you go into PARs or if you go into Infinite Campus, it's just, there's a lot of data there. And really, it doesn't do us much good until we organize it in a meaningful way. And once we organize it in a meaningful way, then we can go ahead and draw some conclusions, list some main findings, and begin to make decisions. So that's a very important phase as well. Phase four is respect and connect. So once we've done all of that, now we need to start communicating these main findings out to stakeholders. And really, and I know this is kind of, we're hearing this a lot with Project Parkway, we're hearing it a lot, Grant Wiggins and some of that work. It's not about blaming anyone, it's about the findings. It's nothing personal. You know, this is, these are, this is our mission, and this is where we're going in the district. Here's what we found, here is our data, and this is what the data is telling us we need to do or we should strongly consider to do. So phase five here is circumspect, which is just a fancy way of saying we want to take everything into consideration before we begin to act. So obviously, what we learn in the program evaluation is important, but a lot of times there's context, too. So it's important that we think about all of the relevant factors, other contextual pieces that should be considered before we make this decision, and that we kind of look at the whole big picture before we start making big decisions. And then phase six, you can see here that I was just trying to kind of entertain myself with the ECT endings. So eject, connect, correct, protect, and perfect. So anyway, all of these are ECT endings, if you have. So really, all this means is we need to stop doing what's not working, fix what's fixed, what needs fixing, keep doing what's working, and see if there's a way to do it even better. So this is all kind of intuitive, and I think we all know that this is how a continuous improvement process should look. And then phase seven is direct, not in the we're going to force people to do it, but in the let's get everyone to do what's best for kids. And, you know, this is just to show you that this is a continuous cycle, and really, it's not, we don't ever end. We keep, we keep, we keep working, we keep moving forward. Once we're done directing, then we begin to reflect again. So for special services and special school district, really, let me just back up a second. In July, when we met with the stakeholders in special school district and in special services of Parkway, the two, it was that reflect stage. And so we needed to say, kind of, what are our main topics, and then what are the questions that we want answers to? And so that was really what we did. Main topics, questions that we want answered. And that's really what I hope we can do here with the board this evening. So I want to just share with you the main topics that that group in July developed, and then, you know, if you have additional main topics or things that you're interested in, obviously, we would love to hear that, and we'll include it into our research plan. So here are the main topics. Now, these are just the overarching categories, and then after this, there's five main topics. After this, I'll have a slide for each main topic with the guiding questions listed underneath so you can kind of see what specifically we're looking for in each of these main topics. So the first one is just instructional practice and progress monitoring. The second one is student outcomes. The third one is collaboration, especially among parents, students, and districts. Student faculty profile and process. So in special ed, there's a lot having to do with process, IEPs, transition services. So those are kind of the big, the big-ticket items, the big topic areas that we want to investigate, that we've developed, we've sort of come up with so far. And like I said, if you, if there are any others that you all can think of when we get to the end, maybe you could share those with us. That'd be great. So here we go, instructional practice and progress monitoring. I don't want to belabor any of this, but at the same time, I want to be true to the work of the group in July. So I have it up here, and I'm just going to go through it just so you're aware kind of of what these guiding questions are going to be. First one is really all about instructional practices and how they're determined. The second one is all about progress monitoring. The third one is about differentiation practices and how they're implemented. The fourth one is general education staff development that focuses on special education needs. And the fifth question here, how are specific interventions determined or decided upon for individual students? The student outcomes, main topic. And I, you know, I should back up here and say that with this instructional practice and progress monitoring, really, a lot of this is going to be through surveys and then talking to key people who are really, you know, particularly focused in any of these specific areas. So really, the surveys will be important here, but when we get to this next one about student outcomes, we have a lot of this data already because of, as you see with the first point here, we want to look at IEP students and see how they did on the map, on the EOC, other measures like our math common assessments that we have in the district, their GPA, their graduation rates. These are all things we have access to already. So it's a little different take on kind of how we answer these questions. Second one here is measure, what measures do we have for social, emotional, behavioral status? We know that there's a lot more to an educational system than just achievement, and so we want to make sure also that we're meeting the needs of all, you know, sort of all the needs of students and not just their academic/achievement needs. Also, we want to see what measures we have for progress and growth. We want to check about the extent that, to which students with disabilities are accessing or benefiting from the general education program. And then the last question here is what are the outcomes for kids whose needs are not addressed through the general education curriculum? And once again, like I said, these are all just kind of, these are the guiding questions. These are the questions that are really going to kind of fuel our survey development or are going to fuel the queries that we run in PARs or Infinite Campus to organize, to grab the data that we need so that we can organize it to answer these questions. All right, collaboration. This is, this is very important, a big main topic. As you can imagine, it's very important with our dual system since we have Parkway and then we also have SSD. So we want to know how people are working together. It's important. And once again, this is going to be one where really survey data is going to be important because this is, we need to just ask people about this and about their collaboration and how they feel collaboration is working out for them. So is communication between parents and schools effective? Do teachers have opportunities during the day to collaborate with colleagues? What is the most effective and/or most desired means of collaboration? Do teachers and schools share data with the appropriate stakeholders? Do teachers and parents believe their voices and contributions are well-received in their respective schools? And do parents have avenues for collaborating in their respective school communities? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And the last one here, are these avenues communicated to parents? Student faculty profile. Once again, now we're back to just kind of, you know, we should be able to find these numbers. How many students are there with IEPs 504s? What are the frequencies of referrals? The number of programs? Location of programs? Demographics of students in these programs? The number of staff? Service of students outside of Parkway? You know, once again, if you think back, if, once we collect all of this data, this is going to help us with making decisions. Because remember, the later phases in our cycle, you know, are ultimately to make some decisions about how to move forward. So I think the student faculty profile will really help give us some additional tools, insight, data, information that we can use to make the best decisions for the students in Parkway. And then process, this is our last main topic. And so the question's here, how are services determined during the IEP process? How are IEP goals implemented and evaluated? How often are evaluations challenged? Who are the participants in transition IEPs? Looking at the continuum of special ed services, how do we communicate the appropriate transition path? Are IEPs being implemented with fidelity? How are related services and support services determined? And what is the general education teacher's role in the IEP process? Now, I will say, too, with all of this, unfortunately, we use a fair amount of jargon here. And what I, one of the things that I like to communicate to people, especially when we start to survey stakeholders, is we don't want to have that jargon. I mean, once you start throwing in all these IEPs, and no one knows what you're talking about, and you just lose them and you get bad data. So really, that's one of my biggest challenges in my current role is when we develop these surveys, to take sort of what people want to know in the district who speak this language and kind of ask the questions to people who don't speak this language. It's almost like you have to be a translator. So just to let you know and hopefully assure you a little bit there, especially when we survey our parents and students, we just need to make it very plain. It needs to be plain English so that they understand best and can answer best and give us the best data. And then the last one here, are all appropriate interventions available to all students? And I hope, as I've read through some of these guiding questions, that you've noticed that, you know, a lot of them are really getting at some of the things that we care about in the mission of the Parkway School District, the priorities. So with that all having been said, we are very open, and I am very open to hearing if you all have any questions, first of all, about anything that I've said. And then if you have, you know, questions, obviously ask them, but then also if you have other main topics or if you have other questions that you just want answers to, we'd love to hear those at this time.
Nathan?
Yes.
First, let me say thank you. This is very concise and it's complete, what you've presented here. I have the feeling that we're going to have an excellent review and be able to come up with some, you know, we'll be able to know if we need to make improvements. Question I would have for you and area that I would like to see you maybe address is... Question I would have for you, and area that I would like to see you maybe address is, do we have concerns about and have we provided the kind of environment that is safe and has the right kind of tools for them to learn, and whether it's technology or something else along those lines?
So with an emphasis on safety?
Yes.
Okay. Good. And I would say too, that at this, at this time, the plan is not to try to answer your questions.
Right.
The plan is to go ahead and take your questions and then use those to, very good.
We agree.
Very good.
I mean, you talk a lot about the data and the acquisition of data and the fact that there's, a lot of this data may exist and be available for these students. And I was wondering if there was any type of process to kind of make sure that that, that that happens, that you're not, you're not going out and asking the same questions or gathering the same type of data that may be at your disposal? And then also, as this process, you mentioned, is continuing, that, that data could actually be utilized historically, maybe show trends, that there's some methodology in place to manage that aspect of the data? I mean, do you have any, is there a plan in place or is there procedures in place to do that?
I'm sorry, I guess I missed the point. Was it just with the?
With the, with the data, did you, is there, I mean, I guess for this particular process, but in general, I mean, you gather a lot of data, you manage a lot of data. Do you have any procedures or methodologies in place to make sure that data is being utilized to the best of people?
Oh, I understand. Okay, thank you. Yes, so in the past, you mean like survey data or are you talking just any kind of data that we collect?
Any kind of data, yeah, because it's, you know.
In the past, you know, what we've done is we've, we've written reports generally around the survey data. I think what's going to happen with our current, you know, we're trying to improve this process, and I think what's going to happen is that we'll kind of take this big, these big reports that we've had and try to really do a good job boiling it down and having the stakeholders look at these reports and then kind of having them sort of say, okay, based on what we see here, here are our main findings and here are our recommendations based on it. So, you know, I mean, I think that we've done a good job organizing the data in the past. I think we could probably improve in the area of collaborating with people around those organized data and then make good decisions, make good recommendations, make, you know, kind of list out the findings. So that would be my plan, is that I kind of make sure that it gets well organized and then the stakeholders participate to make the most of that data.
Yeah, I mean, we're, because we're talking about a change in the way we're looking at the process. You know, like I said, typically, the standard life cycle is you go through the program evaluation, you wind up with a big report that you present and gets put on a shelf, and this seems like an opportunity to kind of like make it more of a process and more integral to take advantage of all this.
Absolutely, and that was one of our problems. Every six years, you're right, who's watching it? So our goal now is the directors or the coordinators in charge, our cycle is about every two years, to come back and look again at specific data where we saw a gap. And it will be unveiled to you in October, but we do have a dashboard now. And even as we receive just recently our math data or our graduation, today we were talking about what is, what is it that we want to monitor real closely? That goes on the dashboard. So as we do this program evaluation, we may find something that we want in front of us all the time, and we may find other data we want to look at every two years, but that is part of it. It was one of the criticisms in the task force, that we wait too long to monitor that baseline data. And we now have the tools to do it, so.
Good.
Nathan, how, how does it break down as to the participants in this evaluation? In other words, administrators, parents, and so forth? How does that break down in numbers?
You mean the kind of, kind of the, the whole process?
Yes.
I would say that in July, you know, July being kind of a tough month to get, month to get people, we mostly had administrators, I'm trying to think, but we had people, administrators from special school district as well as from special services. Did you want to say something?
Yes, obviously. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
This is new for both of us.
Go for it.
We're learning. Sam referred to this. And so now, on the fourth Tuesday of every month, we will have representatives from every school. And Marie, Steve, myself will be leading that team. One of the agenda items will be this program evaluation. So we will keep monthly our school team representatives current. Also, at our Project Parkway four meetings, there will be a special education advisory, which will include students and parents and other community stakeholders. Those four times, they'll be looking at this data. After that, we'll give you the count.
Okay.
Okay, until they sign up at the first Project Parkway meeting, I don't know how large that advisory, special ed advisory will be, but that's when we'll be having, what do we call them? Focus groups, there you go, of students and parents that we can talk to.
And did you say you'd be meeting four times?
Four times. We have four Project Parkway meetings this year.
For this particular transition or evaluation?
Uh huh.
Okay, and then you'll be ready by October to present that, did you say?
No, it's just the beginning of the gathering of the data.
Okay, so what is the timeframe?
The timeframe is we have another year and a half. When do you come back? I forgot. Say again.
Come back and report?
No, 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 with initial, but then you have another year before you really write your goals. I don't have the date for next year.
That's okay.
But they will come back presenting some of the data that they have, that goes back. And then there's, in the old process, it was when we brought the curriculum guide back, and now it'll be about a year before we bring back our goals and strategic plan for that area.
Okay.
About a year and a half of process total.
Good, thank you.
When you are going to be surveying parents, you're not only going to be surveying parents with students who have IEPs, correct?
Well, I mean, based on the, what we do is we take these questions that we have here, use them as guiding questions. So insofar as the questions pertain specifically to parents who have students with IEPs, we would ask, you know, those parents, but we could also, I mean, depend, obviously, like I said, it's a collaborative process, so if we decide, we're going to send out a lot of surveys, you know, who we send them to all specifically is going to be just exactly based on what these guiding questions are.
Because I would think you would want evaluation by parents who perhaps tried to get an IEP for their child but didn't succeed?
Okay.
Or, you know, I don't know how you capture that.
Right, and so what we can do there is we can ask that specific question. So we could send it out to just parents.
General public.
Right, and then ask them questions about, does your student, you know, have special needs, and then a question about specifically, did you try to get an IEP for your student and couldn't? You know, I mean, obviously, we can ask all those questions so that when we disaggregate, we can, we can pull those parents out and see how they answer.
I would think that would be something we would want to know.
I think that's fantastic, yeah.
Also, with our new mantra of being better, being different, I would like to see when this is done, when we get the results, we need to relate everything back to our mission, vision, learning principles, and commitments. So I don't know how that would change what we have done, but it needs to be changed.
Okay.
So a creative person needs to figure out how to do that.
All right, all right. Fair enough.
I think another question to ask is the transition from grade level to grade level for students. I'm not sure if that's in there or not, but it's something to think about.
Okay.
The other thing, and I think Kathy knows what I'm going to ask, it seems like, and I think this is extremely comprehensive and very well done overall, but is there any thought about using outside sources such as university professors, other outstanding special ed programs around the country that we could ask the questions and kind of get their response to the questions, or have some interviews, or even bring a consultant that really has a lot of expertise? I know there's a lot of expertise within the district, there's no question about it. But, you know, sometimes we look at ourselves and we decide on, you know, what we think by ourselves.
I think that's a fantastic recommendation.
And I think looking at outside resources, doing the research, et cetera, is really important.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
I guess just a couple of thoughts, and these were probably covered in your July meetings, and I'm on the SSD governing council, so I'm familiar with their continuous improvement process and actually participated in a, in a focus group, I think it was in July. Things run together in the summer. But there's an awful lot of data residing within SSD and also a lot of, a lot of design of program evaluation going on in those halls too, so certainly hope we can, and they've already been intimately involved with Project Parkway and maybe vice versa. We should, we should gain some insight and, and expertise into the, into the Baldridge process that they're utilizing.
Very good.
Again, a lot of this turns out to be jargon translation.
Good.
And I think on that note, I wanted to recognize our PACCD president and executive board members who are absolutely a resource when it comes to translating jargon. They've lived it.
Very good, very good.
But we didn't always see that.
So, yeah, I would second Sam's thoughts on the, on the resources we have available. Let's bring them all into play. And Kathy, this is, you and I had conversations a year and a half, two years ago. It is really exciting to see the reality happening, and I guess my only thought on the, from my previous experiences, now we're all about closing gaps, and that's what this is, and it's, the circle is the best diagram, and it's, it's happening all the time. And Dr. Colombo, very excited to see this going on, and I, and I know you and I have had conversations also, and I think bringing this into reality, and I think there's still, even in some of the PowerPoint slides, I would quibble with terminology like gen ed. I think, a little bird told me once, there ain't no gen ed classrooms left, so.
Fair.
So I guess no, no real specific questions, just recognition of the, of the participants, and I'm very excited to see what the, what the process is going to produce.
Very good.
Hi, Nathan. One of my questions is not specifically related to special ed evaluation, but to all your evaluations, because I don't think I heard you mention any student surveys.
Yeah.
And I think student surveys could be really effective. Our secondary students have a lot to say.
Absolutely.
We just need to ask the questions sometimes. I hear from my two teenagers all the time, why don't you just ask us? You know?
And actually, last year, we, we did send out a fair, we sent out transportation service to students, and we sent out commerce ones. So, yeah, we, that's definitely on our mind, yeah.
I'm particularly interested when you, when it comes around time to do the science.
Okay.
When you talk to students about what a difference in their academic lives these science labs have made, you know, if there's a way to quantify their interest level or their success or their growth in science based on the new environment that they're learning in, I think that would be really interesting.
Sounds good.
But, okay, that's getting ahead of myself. I had another question about this particular evaluation, and that is, are we following our special ed alumni? Because I think perhaps our goals might be a little bit different for this population of students, and I'd like to know, you know, where they go when they graduate?
Okay.
And where they find success and where they don't find success, and what we can do to help, you know, guide them in a, in a more successful pattern.
I think that's a great recommendation, and I can, I'll check around and see if we have a list maybe of go-tos and try to see if we can track down contact information, but I think that's a great idea.
I just, I think that alumni was a great idea, especially, I think, in this particular study. If we could do anything from focus groups to, then that's maybe the best avenue. And, yeah, I think that's a great recommendation, probably in all the studies, but I think in this one in particular, a good way to follow up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for listening to me.
And everybody's efforts. I'm just excited when I think about some of the questions that you have presented, and then there's been some very good ones added here tonight on the board.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate each of the board members who've taken that interest and then had some good questions for you. We look forward to the effort and the work that will be done. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you.
And we thank you again. 14.0, policy review, believe it or not, there are none. Yay. That means we're going to pile on next month. 15.0, call for a special meeting, none. 16.0, call for executive session, September 21st, 2011. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second at the Board of Education, call for an executive session on Wednesday, September 21st, 2011, at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal, personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13. Roll call, Ms. Calanda?
Mrs. Castillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Seertino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Motion carries, 7-0. 17.0, recess. 18.0, closed meeting. 19.0, may I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we are adjourned.
From the Devon Carter Memorial Chair.
Thank you for your attendance and for all your effort tonight. Thank you.